It is 8 o'clock. Time for our pre-agenda meeting. As always, please silence your cell phones. Cell phone use is prohibited in the Board of Commissioners' meeting room. Today's invocation will be by Commissioner Doherty. I would do a pledge of allegiance. Then we were in approval of the October the 5th meeting. Discussion of adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. One thing we would like to add to our consent agenda. As the Board is aware at our last meeting, we approved a lease for the food line out on U.S. Highway 70 for our vaccine and testing site for COVID. One of the issues that has arisen since we signed the lease was there was no HVAC. The owners of the property are willing and they're looking at a fix for that. But they have asked for an additional six-month lease for that property. And what staff would like to do is recommend that we approve the additional six months at $30,000 for those six months. Again, we're paying $100,000 a year for the lease now, so that would be a reduction for the additional six months of $20,000.
Is the HVAC, in fact, is it just a unit or bed? I mean, is the...
Nothing there. There was nothing.
They were missing.
They were missing.
Lot of chillers and stuff. The fan stuff works, but it's...
The fans worked. When we walked in, we did cut the fans on, but we were unaware at the time that the HVAC units were removed from the roof.
Okay.
But if the Board is approval, you know, again, this is using some of our COVID dollars for this project. It's not general fund dollars. But we do also feel like it would be, it's a great location for us, and we would like to recommend that extension. If we could add that as number 12, adjustment of food line lease.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have as far as changes at this time.
Okay, anyone have special presentations?
Yes, oh, yes, I'll go ahead. I'm sorry. Special presentations. Number one, motion to approve 2021 County National Family Literacy Day proclamation. Ms. Jane Gable will be here for that. Number two, motion to approve 2021 National First Responders' Day in Wayne County proclamation. And, Mr. Chair, I believe you're reading that.
Mr. Gurley, will you read, Commissioner Gurley, will you read it?
Yeah, I'll read over it first. Wait, show me the big words I can't pronounce.
And then, number three, update from Dr. H. Edward Kroom, who's president of the University of Mount Olive. I had lunch with Dr. Kroom about a month ago, and he wanted to just come and talk about really the good things that are happening at the University of Mount Olive.
Okay.
And then we have unfinished business. Number one, motion to approve moving one monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners to an afternoon meeting as requested by Commissioner Bethan Foster. Commissioner Foster made that request. Then at 9:30, we do have a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed amendment to the Wayne County subdivision ordinance. And again, each speaker will have three minutes during that public hearing. And then, again, following the public hearing, the Board of Commissioners may take action on the proposed amendment. No questions on that. We'll go to the consent agenda. Number one is application for elderly or disabled exclusion. Been reviewed and recommended for approval by staff. Number two, application for disabled veteran exclusion. Again, recommended and approved by, for approval by staff. Number three, application for present use value. And again, recommended for approval by staff. Four is application for property tax exclusion. And again, recommended for approval by staff. And then we have our ever-present, number five, budget amendments. And I'll turn that after our finance officer, Allison Spade.
Okay, your budget amendments begin on page 34. Your first budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office requesting to move funds for two Sheriff's Office vehicles. This is specifically for the services they provide to our Department of Social Services. These funds were budgeted, but were not budgeted in a capital account, and we need to move those funds to the appropriate account.
So, if I could inquire, so you're saying they were already in the budget, it was just in the wrong category?
Correct, yes, sir. And we have talked them about budgeting that next year in the appropriate account.
Okay, thank you.
Your next budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office. They are requesting to reallocate $32,372 for service and maintenance contracts from professional services. This is actually going to cover a software agreement that spans two years. Bids were received and appropriately awarded. And the, but funds were budgeted, but this is for the certification standards. I think, I don't know if there's been one chosen yet, but it would be similar to Kalia certification. And the Board did vote to put in $50,000 in that budget for that program. So this is coming from that line item.
And this was bid out?
Yes, sir. Three bids or quotes were received. For the Sheriff's Office, they are requesting to anticipate and appropriate additional controlled substance tax monies in the amount of $217.89. On page 43 for the detention center, you see a request to appropriate fund balance in the amount of $91,110 for capital outlay. This is a project that actually was budgeted in a previous budget. I think there had been some issues in trying to fit, get fitted shower pans in the detention center. So that project longer than expected. So what we're actually doing is re-appropriating funds from the prior year to this year to use those monies for, I think they've found a vendor that can do it.
But they've already finished all that?
Okay, on page 47 for the sewer, they are asking to reallocate $5,000 from their utilities electricity line item to professional lab services. There were funds budgeted for lab services, but there has been increased bills from the city on this particular item in the sewer. So they are asking to increase the amount for the year, and hopefully this will cover us through the remainder of the fiscal year. For services on aging, they've received additional funds from SHIP, which is the Senior Health Insurance Information Program, in the amount of $3,573. And these are grant funds. The remaining budget amendments, which covers numbers 121, 122, 123, and 124, I'll cover all at one time. These are all for the Health Department. If you look at the budget amendments, they are for different programs noted under the code number by things like 131-5110, 131-5124. This budget amendment is to appropriate funds for the fringes that relate to the retention recruitment bonus that was passed in the last board meeting. But fringes were not budgeted, so they are going back and appropriating funds for fringes on this.
So how much was that?
Roughly 15, 20, about $30,000. And they are appropriating it from their fund balance within the Health Department. And it says this will be taken from COVID-19 Medicaid revenue and COVID-19 insurance revenue earned through the allowable billing services the Health Department is providing.
And that's for, is that for, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might point out, at the health board meeting, actually, this program has brought us three nurses already, so it is working.
So how many nurses are we short now?
I'm not sure.
A lot.
There's still a lot of shortage, but at least we've got three that...
How many, how many left?
Who are now?
How many left before getting that three?
How many left?
Yes, before getting that three.
How many, how many nurses? Oh, I think that was, wasn't there 12? I think there were 12, around 12 nurses that had retired or left for one reason or the other.
Okay, that's all I have for you today.
So the, didn't we do something like a month, like six months, or what was it?
Yeah, it was eight months.
It was paid out.
It was paid, a $5,000 bonus over an eight-month period. So once you work it, you get that one fifth or that one eighth.
Through the end of the fiscal year?
Yes. Yeah, but, yeah, because it was eight months, we approved that one.
So if somebody gets hired, say if we hire somebody in April, how does that work?
They would probably still be getting the bonus.
That's correct. They just extend for the eight months. So then we've got to go into next year's budget to cover, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
But again, they're taking it from their money, their COVID.
Their COVID revenues.
Okay. But they'll still be here next, next fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then after budget amendments, motion to approve recommendation of award to Barbara Brothers Construction Incorporated for a contract amount of $2.542 million for the Wayne County Executive Jetport Apron Pavement Rehab Project. As the Board is aware, this is something we've been working on for a while. We really had good bids on this project, and we were able to do the alternate as well with that because the bids came in so well. I think they were close to a million dollars under what was being projected. So this is a really good project for us and will really be a huge asset for our jet port.
Are the funds coming out of where?
The, it's grant funding is 90/10. We'll have to come up with 10%, but part of our ARP funds can be used for transportation for the match.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then, next...
And if I were born out also, there was a local company, Barbara Brothers, that got that, that bid, which is another plus.
There were several local companies that bid it.
Yeah.
And then, number seven, motion to approve the petition to add North Landing Drive, Northfield Drive, and Northfield Place of North Landing, Sunny Creek Township, Wayne County, to the state maintenance system. Again, this is a resolution that we have to pass to ask that these roads be placed in the state road system. And they do meet DOT requirements. And number eight, motion to approve the surplus property upset bid for 807 South Slocombe Street, Goldsboro, jointly owned with the city of Goldsboro as requested by the city. And I'll have Andrew.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This was a request from the city of Goldsboro at their September 7th meeting. They received a, they received an offer of $5,445 from, it's called Community Technical Assistance Incorporated. I looked it up, it's a nonprofit based out of Raleigh. So that was approved at their September 7th meeting. They went through upset bids, did not receive any upset bids, so they sent it over to the county for us to approve it. If it is approved, then we would split the proceeds 50/50 with the city. And I did look it up, and the property's vacant at this time.
Questions?
Thank you.
Number nine, motion to adopt Resolution 2021-36, Resolution Adopting the 41st Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County. Again, this is a reclassification of an administrative assistant to the sheriff, to a business manager, administrative assistant position. Part of this is we do have a retirement over there, and we also have somebody that is going part-time, and this new position will be picking up those additional duties. So that was the justification for the increase, or looking at changing the job classification.
Are we eliminating the part-time position?
No, the part-time position is there, but this position will be picking up some of those jobs.
Not all of them, just...
Not all, just, yes, sir. And number 10, motion to adopt Resolution 2021-37, Resolution Authorizing Electronic Listing of Personal Property in Wayne County in accordance with the standards and requirements prescribed by the North Carolina Department of Revenue and Delegating Authority to provide for electronic listing of personal property to the county tax assessor pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 105-310.1. And to explain all that, we do have our tax administrator, Alan, here. Alan can probably explain this in 30 seconds.
Geez, thanks for the confidence. Good morning, Ariane. This is basically bringing us into the 21st century. Historically, when you, we have our listing period every January. You list your personal property during the month of January. And the statute is required that it would be a handwritten document, basically or typed-up document, but it's a physical document that requires a signature. This is bringing us, allowing us to accept electronic submissions along with electronic signatures. This will help our business community. We're going to start with the business listings at first. We have a lot of CPAs and accountants that do multiple listings for multiple companies in the county. This will help streamline this process for them and for us on our end, too. It's basically a seamless document, comes into our system, we review it, and it's automated, and then we list it versus taking a hard-copied document, having to flip through it, key and stuff, and it's brought into our system automatically. So it's basically, like I said, brings us into the 21st century. We started with business personal first. If that works good, we have to eventually add regular personal property, which is your mobile homes, jet skis, boats, property like that in the future.
This, this has been one of the questions that I've had to come to me is, you know, is when is, when is our tax department going to upgrade to, you know, doing things electronically?
We're, this, we were, we were proceeding with caution. I want to make sure it worked in the system, our computer system and everything was up and running. We have several counties that are on our system that did it last year. I want to make sure all the bugs were working out, so we're ready for that to start this year. So we'll be sending out information with our listings this year when it goes out for the January listing period.
Alan, will you still be accepting hard copies from maybe people that are not on computer?
Yes, ma'am. That's not going away at all. We'll still take those, and people can still come to the office and list, yes, ma'am. Sure can.
So I can still come visit?
Certain people can come.
Good answer.
Any more questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, it's 45 seconds. Then number 11 is motion to approve policy for design bid build with general contractor for prequalification for Wayne County, North Carolina. Again, this is, we do not have a policy in our purchasing for design bid build. This would approve that policy as outlined under North Carolina General Statutes. There has been discussion about looking at doing design bid build, but in order to do that, we have to have a policy that is approved by the Board of Commissioners, and this is asking for that policy to be approved, and that will be part of purchasing's internal policies.
Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, y'all good with this?
Yes, sir.
Just trying to take, how long has this policy been in place, you know, having been finances?
I'm not sure. It's part of the general statutes, so I'm not sure how long it has been. It's just something the county has never done or considered, and what they're saying is, before you consider it, the Board has to adopt a policy based on the general statutes. And then, number 12, as we discussed, motion to approve changes to our lease with food line, extending that for additional six months at a cost not to exceed $30,000. And again, subject to approval by our attorneys. And...
Do I need to add an appropriate budget amendment to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And then that's all under consent, and then we'll go to new business. Motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioners' meeting room in the Wayne County Courthouse Annex at 224 East Walnut Street, Goldsboro, regarding the proposed voter district plan for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. The purpose of the public hearing is to gather public comment and input on the proposed Board of Commissioners voter districts prior to consideration by the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, should we also add school districts to that as well? Because it's county commissioner districts as well as school districts, since we use the same districts. What does the general statute state?
The merger agreement between, that was adopted by the county commissioners when the two boards merged, said that their districts would be the same as the county commissioner's districts.
That being the city, the city school board and the county school board?
When they, when they merged back then.
Okay, so you really don't have to have that in there, okay.
Right. And that, that lawyer, the school board's lawyer, has talked to Andrew and me about that, and apparently he's satisfied that they don't have to do it.
And then, number two, motion to amend the vaccination policy passed by the Board of Commissioners on September 21st, 2021, to consider including non-vaccinated employees as requested by Commissioner Bethan Foster. And we did not get a copy of the, the policy in your agenda packet, but we do have one that we'll be able to give to you if you need it for reference.
Can you explain a little bit about that, I mean, to me?
It is a request from Commissioner Foster. I think he does want to have an amendment to the policy.
Yes. I really, when we first introduced the policy, I think that was, what was me?
September 21st.
Didn't make that meeting. I didn't really like it because it's kind of sort of incentive to get employees to get vaccinated. And I think that, you know, it just should be a personal decision. And regardless of whether you're vaccinated or not, you can still get the virus and still pass it on to someone. It's just, it's really not a big difference, it's just a personal, a personal preference to get it or not get it, from what I've studied and what I've seen across the board with the virus. So I received a letter from, I guess, an employee with some complaints about it, so I wanted to bring it back to the Board and see if we could discuss it to hopefully include all employees, so they'll feel a little bit better about it. So, that's just it.
Thank you. I was not at that meeting.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, we'll make sure, we'll hand this out during the, before...
Let me ask you a question. Does that extend, is that the hours or the, or is it the 80-hour deal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, how does, how does that work if somebody doesn't have, if they get it twice? It says they don't have any sick time or whatever, how does that work?
If they're vaccinated, they, they will get the additional 80 hours, if they're vaccinated.
But if we approve this, if you're not vaccinated...
Well, we've already approved it. We already have, but if, if somebody is unvaccinated and is still COVID-related, they would get 80 hours. And if they don't...
So does it keep going over and over, or just one time?
Well, it's 80 hours total.
Okay, so 80 hours, so say, say if they don't, if they get it again, or something happens, somebody in their...
Right.
... gets it.
Personal time.
Right. What if they don't have personal time? How does that work?
If they don't have personal time and they're not vaccinated, it is leave without pay, or they can try to get, you know, time donated to them?
I'm talking about this, if we approve this, if they're vaccinated or not, they get 80 hours, correct?
If they're vaccinated, they get the additional 80.
But if we approve this, then it would, that's non-vaccinated.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right, that's what I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So after the fact, if they don't have the time, do they have leave without pay? Or do they, I mean, is there, is there any kind of policy in place that...
Yeah, yeah, donate the time or leave without pay.
So has any of that happened beforehand?
Yeah, we have had that, for those that have been unvaccinated. You know, again, it, back when, under the CARES Act, you know, this was part of the CARES Act, that it was included for everybody, that you got 80 hours of personal time for COVID-related activities. We extended it as a board and as a county to March, basically trying to get, you know, get a lot of people vaccinated at the time. So we extended it at the time, then it ended. And so from March to September 1st, or 21st, excuse me, if you had a COVID-related sickness, you had to take your personal time. But what this did on the 21st said, we would go back and reimburse you those hours if you were vaccinated, if you had a breakthrough through case.
Okay, so, okay, let me make sure I understand. So there is a policy in place? You said, did you say something about donated time? You could donate, so another employee can donate time, is that correct?
How often does that happen? Like, I mean, has, have we done this before?
Yeah, we've done that all the time. People, you know, people have certain special circumstances.
Not only be done in certain situations, but we probably should clarify that.
Employees, employees can donate time to other employees if they have exhausted
all of their sick leave banks. Employees can receive a maximum of 240 hours of donated time in the lifetime of their career with Wayne County. So in the past, an employee, say they had a COVID-related event, they got 80 hours of time from us, and then they have another event, they can have time donated from another employee. So if they, if they're vaccinated, we give them their time back. If they were unvaccinated, following this September 21st policy, then they just have to use their own sick time, or we approve leave without pay.
So how do you keep up with it?
We have, we keep up with it in the human resources office. We might, we have a spreadsheet, we keep up with all the hours. We're monitoring it.
Okay. So I guess if somebody were, I'm just thinking in my head, I mean, I know, I mean, you know, you would think people would do things like this, but I'm just saying, if you got somebody that's got, that doesn't have time, and they get donated time to them, so I guess with this going about, if something, if we had somebody, I mean, just say if it was me, and Chip gives me time, and then I get whatever, 40 or 80 hours, I mean, is it, is it like, is it like given to them upfront, or is it...
No, no, it is, again, for, if you're vaccinated, it's based on the incident of COVID. So, so somebody, you know, had regular sickness, you know, a surgery, that would not count. that would not count unless it was a COVID-related incident.
I guess, okay, I'll just get that.
Yeah, this is specifically COVID-related incidents.
Okay, so it's not giving them 80 hours of actual sick time?
Just as a bank.
Okay, so, okay, so like I said, if Chip give me hours, and then this come about, I couldn't give him his hours back, is what you're saying? If you build, if you build hours up?
We, 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 we've kind of take, we've had this discussion, and I, I think the discussion was, if I've already given you time, you've get, you've lost the time, you know, that, that we would not try to go back and forth and saying, you know, it, once you get, you know, you, you give that time to somebody, then you have forfeited that time, and that person receives benefit.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Yes, sir. The reason I had voted this, I had some real issues with this to start off with. But the reason I voted for it was because we were encouraging our employees to get vaccinated. If you remove that requirement of vaccination, you're really not doing anything to encourage our employees to get vaccinated. You're just, you're just increasing benefits. So the reason this policy was put in place was primarily to encourage vaccination of our employees. Am I correct?
Yeah, and, and if you look at it as well, we're, you know, for the unvaccinated, we're not taking away anything from them.
Right.
We're, we're not taking, it, it is a bonus.
If you get vaccinated, here's an additional benefit that you would have.
Well, I'm not, I'm just... I'm, I'm, I'm not, um, I'm not implying to force anybody to do anything that I don't want to do. I, I, I'm just, I'm, I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not for that. My, I would, I'm, I was just making sure I understood if, if you had somebody that give, give time, I mean, you know, what I'm saying, it looks like we're just, we're giving time, but what you're saying is not happening unless it's a COVID-related incident.
Right.
Okay, but we're not forced, because I had an issue with the original policy, because I felt like it was going to pit, uh, employees against employees, vaccinated or non-vaccinated, you know, whether, whatever their, you know, beliefs were or reasons were, health, whatever. But what you're saying is it's not giving somebody 80 hours of time, just it's in a bank that you can use for whatever. It's got to be COVID-related.
Okay, I'll give it that.
Here, um, my question to you, I wish someone was here from the Health Department, but can a vaccinated person get COVID?
Yes.
Yes.
Can a vaccinated person pass on COVID?
So what now?
Can a vaccinated person pass COVID on to someone?
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
That's a yes.
That's a yes. It's, it's a yes. Um, so what, what are we actually doing here? I mean, to be honest, it's like you're, you're, you're trying to give a prize for going, getting the shot that it really is not saying it's going to do anything. You know what I mean? It may help you, it may not help you. You may not get the shot and may not, may never get COVID. It, it could go either way. It's not enough evidence, it's not enough scientific facts to prove anything now with the shot, you know what I mean? Just yesterday, I'm, I'm watching TV, and it said that they're finding inflammation in young men behind the shot. You know, it, it, we don't know what's going to cause it on, so some people are nervous and scared to get the shot. You know what I'm saying? So my thing is, at this point, if an employee gets it, employee gets it. You know what I'm saying? I mean, does it, should it, should it, should they not be covered because they didn't, because they didn't get the shot that, and what if a, a vaccinated employee gives it to a non-vaccinated employee? That's, I mean, come on, like, what, what are we saying? You know what I'm saying? And it's, it's just, we're, we're, you know, to me, I shouldn't try to entice anybody with anything to go get something that they, they're not comfortable with getting. If they want to do it, fine, but at the end of the day, they're still an employee. They still work here. They should still be covered under this because nothing is stated yet through science, medical facts or anything, that the vaccine stops you from getting it or passing it on. And that's the main thing right there. It may prevent some death. It may prevent some complications. I, I don't know, but at the end of the day, there's no scientific fact stating that. So what's the difference at the end of the day? You can still test positive for, you can still get sick, you can still pass it on. So I, I just think that the policy needs to be changed, in my opinion. If the board agrees, fine. If it doesn't, I understand. But it's something that I wanted to bring back to the attention, because at the beginning of this, I didn't agree with it, and I stated it then.
Well, this is the change in it.
No, sir. This is, this is the policy as it is.
This is the policy that is now.
Yes, sir.
But what we're talking about now is changing it.
Commissioner Foster asked for it to be on the agenda, I, I think, to change it to allow all employees to get that benefit, not just vaccinated.
If it's COVID-related.
If it's COVID-related, that's it, that's it. No, no, no other reason. I mean, no other reason. If you use your time for something else, then that's just, we're talking about strictly COVID right now.
As of, as of today, do we know how we're trending with, with, with COVID in the county?
I, I do not have those numbers with me. No, sir, I'm sorry.
You know, at hospital last week, we're trending downward.
Downward. So, so if we were to amend this resolution, maybe there's a possibility that the employees may not even have to use this if we continue to trend downward. So...
Do we have, the problem with that though is there's no evidence that that'll last, because it is, seem to be cyclic, cyclic right now.
Yeah.
We're coming into cold and flu, cold and flu season, so you, you never know what, how it's going to react.
I make a suggestion, um, that Mr. Honeycutt, you table this for now, and you bring it back to us at the next meeting, a revised version, and distribute it so we can all read it before we vote on it.
Um, revised to include, well, well, do you want to talk about that during the regular meeting, maybe?
Well, I mean, I don't want to table it until then, only because, I mean, some could happen within those two weeks.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And, and my thing is, if we can make a motion on it today to include all employees, or the motion could pass or fail, and it's as simple as making that change.
Do we have a figure on the percentage of county employees that have had the shot?
No, not that I'm aware of.
There was some information I was looking for.
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you ask that?
I don't...
You think you could ask that question, Kenny?
Yeah, we don't have a policy that we, yeah, yeah.
Well, can we find out how many people in the county have been vaccinated?
Yeah, that information is available.
Yeah, that, that we can check during the break.
That would give us a...
That would give us a...
That should be on the social media.
Yeah, that should be on our, our website, our dashboard on the website. So we can check that during the break.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question on number 11. The sheriff and registered deeds shall have sole discretion as to what extent this policy shall apply to their respective departments. What does that mean?
Well, that's the statute. The general statute allows them to have control over their employees. That's part of the general statute.
They have more flexibility than, than regular county employees would, since they are both elected officials, and that's their department.
So let me make sure I'm understanding. If it's COVID-related, under the policy that we have, and you're fully vaccinated, then you're not going to use your sick time?
You would use the, the 80 hour, yes, sir.
You would use the 80 hour. So if you have sick time, and you're not using it for, for this instance, then you can take that sick time and give it to somebody else?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
No personal sick time is being used if it's COVID-related?
It has, again, if, right now, if you are not vaccinated, you use sick, if you're out, use your bank sick time. You can, if you don't have any additional sick time...
But you see the problem that I've just discovered, and that is, you are in essence giving sick time on top of sick time. If it's COVID-related, then you're not charged the sick time, and you can take your sick time and give it to somebody else.
The, the issue also that we have is not every sick time request gets, you know, for donation of sick time gets fulfilled as well. You know, people make requests for donated sick time. Not all of them get requested, or they get, they get filled at a lesser amount than originally requested. Um, so, you know, it just depends. So, so it, it doesn't mean...
But let me just move to the private sector for a minute. I work for a Joe's Road Machine Shop. They're not giving these type of benefits out. I mean, I think we are really expanding benefits to the public sector that the private sector is not able to, nor willing to give. It's financially, I, I mean, you're just really adding a burden. Again, in this case, I basically went along with it because you were encouraging people to get vaccinated. That was the benefit. You, you didn't demand, we did not require people to get vaccinated, but if you got vaccinated and did some additional things to, to help us not have the sick leave, not have the, the employee absinthe, then this was a benefit to the county. And now we're going to open it up to where, whether you're vaccinated or not, you, you're going to get coverage for an out, being out. I, I'm just saying, we really are expanding this if you in fact include non-vaccination or the requirement of vaccination.
I think Commissioner Foster made some very, very good points. And in my opinion is, and Commissioner Darcy also did, is basically rescind the policy about the, the stage before this.
What, well, let me ask you this. What are you going to do to the people that you've already given the time back to? I mean, it's kind of...
Well, it's only two weeks now, so...
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I'm sure there's several that's got the time. I mean, this, I tell you, here's my issue with the policy. It's like you're pitting, like I said, like you're pitting one against the other. It's known that a vaccinated person can get the virus again, based on what Commissioner Harson said, that a vaccinated person can transmit the virus to somebody else. That being said, if he, that person comes, he or she comes back to work, and you've got people in that office or department that's not vaccinated, the person that's vaccinated can give it to the person that's not vaccinated. So whose fault is it? You, you see where I'm coming from? I mean, who's, who's, is it the person that got vaccinated and got it virus again and give it to the person that didn't get vaccinated? Or is it the person that didn't get vaccinated? I mean, you know, it, it's a finger pointing, and that's where I come, that, you know, we're pitting each, we're pitting employees against employees. I, I mean, if it's COVID-related, I don't have an issue with it. I mean, I understand what Commissioner Darcy says. I'm not, I'm not forgiving. I was under the impression that we're just giving people 80 hours. And if I give, if I give time to somebody else because they didn't have it, out of goodness of my heart, and then they get 80 hours, I got a problem with that.
Right, but again, it, it does not go into your bank, you know, your personal time bank, you know, that, that people, you know, use long-term for retirement, you know, that...
Is there a timeline? Is there a timeline on this policy? Is it, is it open-ended?
We, I think we ended it, yes, open-ended right now. Oh, yeah, it was retroactive to April 1.
So it's retroactive to April 1, so anybody that's got it has already got their time back, correct?
If it was COVID-related.
Okay.
It was COVID-related.
Gentry, do you understand what we're doing? He's probably the only one. That's what I'm asking, or does she understand what we're talking, talking about?
We're, we're at 50.74% in the county for those with the first shot, and 44.74% with one shot, or both shots, I'm sorry, excuse me.
And let me explain that a little bit, because the state is very concerned with the county of Wayne in our low percentages, because we are one of the lower counties in the state of vaccinations. And so, again, this policy is an encouragement to get those percentages up. Number two, let me point out, folks, when you get vaccinated, it doesn't give you 100% guarantee. It's 85 to 90%. So that means that anywhere from 10 to 15%, if you get vaccinated, 10 to 15% of the people, that vaccination isn't going to work. It's not a matter that we've got a massive number of people that got vaccinated that are getting it again. That's not the case. There are 10 to 15% of the individuals that do get vaccinated are susceptible to actually getting COVID-19.
I've never seen that number in my life, but I don't know where you got that one from, but I'd like to see it. Really.
Well, it's not 100%.
I'm just saying that even the 15%, there, there, there hasn't been enough studies out to say how many people can get in a percentage from being vaccinated. I haven't seen that study, and I read this stuff all the time.
Well, there's been the news every day just about that it's 85 to 90% of...
If somebody else has seen it, I haven't. I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to keep going back and forth about it. I mean, it's, it's, it's this. I don't know who else received the letter from the employees, but I think it's an issue. I brought it to our attention during the regular meeting. Either we're going to include all employees, or I say, scratch the policy period. I mean, one of the two. It's, just, I mean, if we, right now, but I'm just saying that we want to get COVID numbers up in Wayne County. How many employees do we have?
About 1,100.
About 1,100. So if, if, just say almost half of those are, are vaccinated, and the other half get vacci, get vaccinated, how much will that change the numbers in Wayne County?
Nothing.
Exactly. So that doesn't even matter. So that's not a, that's not an incentive to change anything. It's not going to look any different amongst, amongst the state or nothing, so that was pointless. So my thing is, at this point, either, you know, we're going to say, look, because I just have a problem with, whether you're vaccinated or not, at this point, you can still get COVID. That's just it. And it's just, to me, it's unfair to our employees if we're going to do it for someone that's vaccinated and not do it for them that's vaccinated, because if they come and get it from work in about two weeks, we have employees that can't survive two weeks without pay. Some people might not realize that, but some people live paycheck to paycheck. They have a family to feed and, and, and everything. So, I mean, you might be able to make it, but then it just puts you so far in a hole you're trying to dig out of it every, every, every month. And, I mean, at the end of the day, I, I don't want to wait another two weeks, because that's two weeks that someone could be without a paycheck or whatever. I would like to make a decision today. And either way, you know what I'm saying? Either, like I said, either we include everyone, or we just scratch the policy period. Because it shouldn't just be an incentive because you got vaccinated.
Okay. Commissioner Foster, I think we all got the, we all received the letter.
That's what I was saying. We, we've got around 1,100 employees. I got one letter.
Would you like me to get number three? Okay.
So, well, I still, at this point, so we're keeping this policy. I just mean, let's keep it, let's, let's say what we're going to do, so we'll be clear here.
We, we, we gotta take action during the regular meeting.
One more thing, Mr. Trenkett. On number 11, can we add the, the general statute there, side of that? From the policy? Always like to add general statute when you, when you're separating something, you know, where if someone's reading this policy, they can go and look at the general statute.
That, that can be part of the motion during the regular meeting.
I have one additional question. Under this policy, if my wife, and I work for the county, and my wife tests positive for COVID-19, am I not supposed to quarantine myself for 10 days, 10 to 14 days? If you got symptoms, right?
If, if, the, the way we've been doing it, if you have symptoms, yes, you should be quarantined.
But you're requiring symptoms. You know, if I've got a, if I'm sneezing, got headache, then as such, under this policy, I've got paid leave during this time. You're shaking your head. That's not the case.
The employee must test positive.
That's right.
You must test positive. Okay, all right. So there are some safeguards there.
It's not just a quarantine. The employee must test positive.
So if my wife has it, she tests positive... So if my wife has it, she tests positive, I've got to test positive to come under this policy. Okay.
If you remember, under the CARES Act back last year, that applied to whether or not the employee tested positive or had to quarantine. The voluntary policy that you all passed, which would have been January 1st of this year, required that the employee actually test positive. So that was a change from the federal law. You, you all did that voluntarily. That wasn't federally mandated. So this is an extension of that requirement. So the employee must show proof of a positive test, and under the current policy, a vaccination card in order to get this benefit. If it changes, then they would, if you change the policy, they just have to show a positive test.
And is it, is it part, I mean, this is probably a departmental thing. If somebody in that department tests positive, does the entire department or the area that they work in go get tested that day? Or does the health department come test them? How does that work?
We, we try. We, that, that's kind of been the policy that we've had. If we've had a positive in a work area, we will shut down and have those employees go get tested at that time. If it is a negative test, we will de-sanitize and come back to work, try to isolate still as much as possible, but as long as they're asymptomatic and they have a negative test, we require them to come back to work.
Right. To keep.
Right. But we, we have shut down, we have shut down a couple of departments before that have had, you know, positive tests, and, you know, especially the, the departments that work on top of one another that we have required that.
Okay, let's move on. We've got two more items to cover before we.
Okay. All right. Number three, motion to approve the design bid build with general contractor pre-qualification process for the new addition to the Cary A Winters detention center site as recommended by the Wayne County Facilities Committee. We can talk about that during the regular meeting. I know we're running a little short. And then number four, motion to approve TA Loving Company as a construction manager at risk for the new combined DSS and Health Department facility as recommended by the Wayne County Facilities Committee. Then, after that, county managers report, board commissioners committee reports. We do not have anything for closed session today. Then we will recess the meeting of the board, and then we will go to, at 1 o'clock, the Chief Donald and Gray Bridge Dedication Ceremony at New Hope Volunteer Fire Department on Mark Edwards Road. Again, refreshments and I think lunch will be served at that, there. And we will adjourn.
We will recess and then go there and we'll adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Okay, where are we going to put the appointment committee stuff at?
My apologies, because we weren't going to do that and it came in late. Appointment committee should follow special presentations, I believe. Let me.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
We'll check that.
Got it?
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Let's take a five-minute break and be back at 9:00 for our regular meeting.